May Pro Tim Harvey.
Here.
Carlson.
Here.
Matthews.
Here.
Mella.
Here.
Sawyer.
Here.
Schaefer.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you Suzanne, the February 11th. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Counsel, before we get started, we have a few people that have mentioned that we're not doing a very good job of speaking into the mic, so we'll do better tonight.
Brett, you mentioned it, because people who at the podium, a couple of them were just absolutely inaudible. And maybe we could do a fundraiser for a new audio system or something.
Oh, maybe.
Or we'll teach everyone how to speak into the microphone.
Not my first choice.
The biggest concern is on, when you watch it on YouTube, you can't even understand what people are saying.
What was that?
Oh, sorry.
Well, a lot of it really does have to do with having the microphone very close to your mouth, and understanding that there are people watching, and it is being recorded. And so if we can articulate our words, enunciate, and slow down, then the rest of the world can understand us. But mostly it has to do with this distance. If I'm back here, it truly makes a huge difference, because we've tested and we've monitored each of you, we all know your habits, so if you can speak like about this.
Hopefully not all of them.
No.
It's hard to slow down when they're yelling at each other. Okay, thank you very much. Welcome again, everybody. Item, agenda item number four, proclamation for the annual Moose is Loose, and is Mike Perini with us? He's not. Suzanne?
No.
Oh!
Mike. And the Moose.
Please come on up. Is the Moose with us tonight?
The Moose is with us, let us grab him from the first.
Oh, my gosh.
You got a problem with this?
Pass out some trees here for you guys. So, the Moose is loose.
Hold on, one second. Let me do that for you, so you can hear the microphone.
There's questions up here, you couldn't pass them off.
And before you start, if you would, please just give us your name and your address.
And the Moose.
Okay, Melinda Trisselli, and I am at 1247 Mateo Camino, Woodland Park.
Legally, doesn't the Moose have to give us a name and address?
Yeah, I guess so.
It is a tweets Moose, so, um, from tweets, I don't know what's address is. There you go.
Well, Melinda, we have a proclamation. Would you like to say a few words before we do that?
Sure. I think the proclamation probably covers a lot of the details, but we're getting ready again for Moose is Loose, the 13th through the 29th. So exciting, we've got over 40 businesses participating this year, and the big excitement is that we have three weekends of rallies. So we'll have our kickoff rally on the first weekend, and then the second rally will be at Gold Hill North, and then the third is going to be the finale rally, and that's going to be at the Cultural Center. So we have some guides and some more information that I'll put on the back counter.
Great, thank you very much, Melinda. I thought it was Tanner in there. I didn't see him in the background.
She's got a twin.
Okay, that said, I will read the proclamation. Whereas, this is a successful annual sales event built by businesses, four businesses in Woodland Park, and whereas the Moose will be campaigning throughout local businesses promoting all things great about Woodland Park, and whereas the Moose will celebrate the 125th anniversary of the city of Woodland Park, and whereas there will be rally locations which will draw crowds, offer freebies to participants, and keep excitement buzzing during the sales event. And now therefore I, Mayor Levy, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the city of Woodland Park, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the weeks of February 13th through the 29th, 2016, as the Moose is Loose Fest. Thank you all very much, and I just have to say a couple of words about Tanner. This event is in its, how many years, Tanner? I'm sorry.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth year. And Tanner's unique in this regard, he's a business guy in town that most of you know, and he decided he wants to do a great event for not only his business, but something that includes everybody in our community. So that's something that we love to see, that's what makes our community great. So let's give a round of applause to Tanner. So the Moose, we thank you very much, Melinda, thank you very much, and best of luck in the next three weeks. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to item number four. Bea and Suzanne?
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This evening we have an application before you for the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee. There's currently two vacancies on that particular committee. We've advertised it in Facebook, website, all the different places that council requires, and we've had a gentleman named Jeff Wheeler, who's in the audience with us this evening, there's Jeff, step up, and he'd like to volunteer for this committee. So I'd like for you to look through his application, invite him up to the podium, ask him any questions that he may have, and then I can get him sworn in if you approve.
That sounds great. Mr. Wheeler, would you like to come forward to the podium? Just give us your name and your address.
Hi, my name's Jeff Wheeler, 591 Ponderosa Lane.
Great, thanks for being here. Give us a sense for why you want to be part of this committee.
Well, I'm a business owner in Woodland Park, and keeping Woodland Park beautiful is something that's very important to me with cleaning up litter, gardening, community garden projects, stuff like that. My business will allow me to donate tile and materials, and put together crews of people, and do my part to keep the town beautiful. So that's why I applied, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you very much, counsel. We have questions. Phil?
Just a comment, I noticed in your application, you've only been here six months, so thank you for stepping up so quickly and doing a very important volunteer job.
Well, I appreciate it, and I look forward to bringing a lot of other people into the same type of volunteerism as what I'm doing, so that's the whole goal. Thank you.
Anybody else? Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Okay, Suzanne?
Thank you. Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously, and if I may, Mayor, I'll--
Please, thank you very much. Congratulations, thank you again.
Thank you, and I'm a little under the weather, so once I get appointed, I am going to go home, I apologize.
Not a problem.
Okay, so I'll have you raise your right hand and state your name. I--
Aye, Jeff Wheeler.
Do solemnly swear--
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution--
That I will support the Constitution.
--of the United States--
Of the United States.
--and of the State of Colorado--
And the State of Colorado.
--the Charter and Ordinances--
The Charter and Ordinances.
--of the City of Woodland Park--
Of the City of Woodland Park.
--and that I will faithfully perform the duties--
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
--of the Office of Keep Woodland Park Beautiful--
Of the Office of Keep Woodland Park Beautiful.
--Committee.
Committee.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Have you seen the sign? Hope you feel better. Thank you. See Sally has a present for you.
Mr. Mayor, if we can give the ceremonial letter.
Thank you, Ms. Wheeler. We didn't get much time, we put them right to work, don't we? Okay, we'll move on to number five, and Suzanne, we have one deletion tonight?
We do, Mayor Levy. Tonight, this evening, on the consent calendar, we will be deleting item 6C, which is the appointment of the personnel, Mayor Board, and just postponing that for a couple of meetings.
Terrific. Okay, why don't you just go through the consent calendar?
Okay. I will start with the minutes of January 21st, and I know Councilmember Carlson has brought something to my attention, he'd like to correct it.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, the minute, yeah, the minute said, just reflect one little sentence saying that I thought the location was best for our community, that was not the point of what I said at all. And so if you would just take a look at the tape of what I said, and expand a bit on what I said.
I will do that. I'll review the tape and correct that if needed.
Yeah, the bottom line is that I wanted to show that we had given the public many opportunities to come on about the location, and that we had followed the law every step of the way. So, you know, because in the last courier view, there were letters of, you know, castigating this council for having been less than honest, or something like that. So I want to make sure that everybody is aware that we did do what we're supposed to do. Thank you.
Okay, so we have the minutes from January 21st, the minutes from the special meeting January 24th, we have a memorandum of agreement between the City of Woodland Park, the Colorado Springs Police Department, the El Paso County Sheriff's Office regarding use of force, we have a contract with Ingenuity and Engineering Solutions for the design of Baldwin Street and US 24 Stormwater Improvements Project in the amount of $26,330, and we have an approval of an organization resolution and agreement for credit card program with Ump Bank. And if there's any questions, the appropriate person can answer.
Counsel, Phil?
Yeah, Bill, on that $26,000, was that, I can't remember, you competitively bid those, right?
Well, this is a spinoff project from our stormwater master plan, and so we're going with the same contractor, consultant that did the stormwater master plan, they've got all the data and can quickly roll into doing a design. This is not a construction project, it's only a design.
So it's effectively pre-vetted?
Yeah, and it's best value, because they've got all the information and are ready to go.
Thank you.
Cool.
Chick Dion, could you explain the MOA, and have we had this MOA with local law enforcement before, or is this a new initiative?
Thank you, ma'am. This is a new initiative that was put in place this past year. By December 31st, 2015, all law enforcement agencies were required to post this publicly. This is the first time that we've been able to get all law enforcement agencies within a judicial district together to do this. And what happens is if we get involved in an officer-involved shooting, we have a lot of the larger agencies, Colorado Springs or El Paso County, which handles these on a fairly regular basis, come in and do the investigation for us. It's done in the spirit of transparency, we see no issues, it's actually a very positive thing for our department.
Would our department ever be called on to do the same for one of those larger municipalities?
No, because we do not handle them to the frequency, so currently if Colorado Springs has an officer-involved shooting, El Paso County handles it, and vice versa.
Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? If not, we'll call for motion to approve the consent calendar as amended.
So moved.
Second. Suzanne?
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. We have no unfinished business tonight, and no ordinances on initial posting, so move right to number nine on your agenda in the public hearings, and the approval of ordinance number 1274. David?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel will recall that last meeting you had this ordinance on the initial posting, and that prior to that you'd received some information and had a meeting, a public meeting, with the school board, the school district, on this item, ordinance number 1274, submitting to the electorate of the city of Woodland Park at the April 5, 2016 election, a certain question seeking authority to impose an additional 1.09% sales tax for educational purposes. What you would be, what we're asking you to do tonight is to approve this after the public hearing, so that it can go on the ballot. This is not necessarily your consent for the item, it's merely the consent to allow it to go to our citizenry for their vote. I do know there's quite a few folks that have signed up to speak on that, and Mayor, after you've had discussion and the public hearing, we would be asking you to approve ordinance 1274.
Great, thank you very much. Counsel? We're in public hearing.
Well, is this for council discussion and then public hearing?
We can go either way. Would you like to have a public hearing first? Okay, let's do that. We have a number of people that would like to speak on this, and everyone's welcome to speak, and what we generally like to do is have everyone have the availability to speak, but please don't repeat what everybody else has said. So if you have new information, that's great. If you don't, and you'd still like to come forward, we would just ask you to make it short and sweet. Okay? That said, I'm going to start with Mr. Ralph Taylor. And if anybody would come to the podium and give us their name and their address, that would be very helpful for us. And as we mentioned, try to speak into the microphone as best you can. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, I'm Ralph Taylor, 460 Black Bear Trail, Woodland Park, and I was looking at what would be in the election, and the portion that interests to me is from the word additional sales tax at the rate of 1.09%, commencing July 1, 2016, and continuing thereafter. I don't like the word thereafter on taxes. Thereafter means it's going to keep going after I die. It would be after my son dies. And going the next paragraph down, educational purposes, that's not defined enough. You know, I could build a whole brand-new high school with additional purposes. So it's not defined enough. Then down to the second bullet where it's highlighted, it says eliminate its existing debt service, mill levy, by refinancing existing general obligation debt. If it's going to continue thereafter, you will never be obligated to get rid of that debt. You'll just generate more debt so you can pay it off with the 1.09%, and I'll die, and you'll continue that debt. I don't like debt. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hopefully we can educate everybody as we go on this evening relative to this question. Thanks for your comments. Next I have Timothy McMillan, I think, is that correct? Sorry if I mispronounce it.
I'm familiar with microphones, so I'll be very close. My name is Timothy McMillan, I live at 102 East Ridge Drive here in Woodland Park. I should start by saying I have some skin in this gang, because I have two kids that are in the school district now, one at the middle school and one at the high school. I am in favor of the 1.09% increase for many reasons. The first reason I'm in favor of it is I believe it's equal for all residents and visitors. I don't believe it's discriminatory against one, we're all consumers, we're all homeowners or business owners, so I feel it's equal in its application. It's also reasonable in scope, in my opinion. I don't think it's an unreasonable amount to raise the taxes, I've seen it higher in other municipalities. In fact, where I moved here from, our overall sales tax was 8.25%. This would make the sales tax in Woodland Park lower than where I moved to Woodland Park from. It's also offset by the property tax reduction for both businesses and homeowners, and again, I see this as a win. Most of us probably who own homes or businesses had our property taxes increase last year, I know mine did, so I'm welcome any kind of decrease to my property taxes. And better schools, of course, enhance the community as a whole, and I believe everybody would want better schools for not only their kids, or their grandkids, or future kids. An investment in the schools is something that we can't take for granted. A school has many needs, being, again, a parent of two students, one who is in band, one who's in athletics, all of them are in the classroom, and additional funding to our schools will benefit not only them, but their peers, and those coming behind them. It'll help by expanding the curriculum in the classrooms, offering more books, more online curriculum, and more opportunities for them to learn even outside of the classroom. Also, teacher salaries in Woodland Park, the Woodland Park School District are among the lowest in the state, and if we're going to have a competitive school district and attract families, attract them to stay, and when they do come here, not send their kids to Manitou Springs, or homeschool their kids, which is their choice, but we'd rather have their choice be to send them to our schools, because they're quality schools, and they have great teachers, and to attract and retain great teachers, we need to pay them fairly. So this will help us do that. It'll also help us repair, replace, and maintain school facilities. I've attended many football games out at the stadium, and I love to go, but the fact is, those stands get crowded. Be nice to have another set of stands out there, so there'd be a little bit of room. This might help in that effort. But I do believe that the majority of the funds would be spent inside the classroom and not on athletics, or other things that people seem to be concerned about. The focus should be in the classroom. And lastly, I believe it's incumbent upon the people that are in favor of this, including myself and those on the committee, to be specific about the costs, to be specific about the wording, to back up what this gentleman said. The voters need to know everything about this in full transparency, so they can vote it up or down as they see fit. But I am in favor of this proposal. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Wheeler. Okay, I'm sorry, but the next name I can't quite read. Michael, is it Dater?
Oh, that's Dalton, but I was just signing that thinking it was a roll sheet, somebody pointed it out.
Appreciate it, Mr. Dalton. Thank you for being here.
We keep close tabs on everyone.
Be sure to check out when you leave. Gwen Doughty?
Got to get a nice and hi. My name is Gwen Doughty, I reside at 19 Ponderosa Circle in Woodland Park, and I am a board member, school board member, so I'm here with a little bit of history to you. My husband and I have four little kids, ages two to eight, and we are reliable contributors to the Woodland Park economy. First, I want to thank you guys for your time here, and for this consideration, and second, I'd like to provide you with a little history to our sales tax initiative and how we got here. It's been over a year of research and outreach to several sample populations of our community. In that time, it became rather obvious that we, as a community, have two distinct needs. First, Woodland Park is unique, and that we have a number of taxing districts supported by our community. And that means we also have one of the highest property taxes in the Pike's Peak region. This is a heavy burden for property owners, especially so for business properties. And second, our state government has made severe cuts across all the districts within this state. For Woodland Park, these cuts in funding equal $15 million over the past six years. In fact, the state government has mentioned that there may be further cuts from schools. Our schools are in dire need of local support and additional sustainable stream of revenue. These are two issues that people may think are quite conflicting to one another. Decreased taxes, increased school funding, how does that work together? But our board has been driven to think outside the box. We were told time and again that a mill levy override, increasing our property taxes, could cripple our business owners, and possibly our residential owners as well, in addition to possibly increasing rent and explaining that to the renters. We realize we are part of a wonderful community, and we want to be able to support our community. We also realize that we, as a district, are underfunded now, and we need community support. So one of my mantras last summer was, there has to be a solution to help property owners, there has to be a solution to help our schools, there has to be a creative way, and I can't tell you how many times I said that over the summer. And that's when we had our aha moment. If we have a new stream of sustainable revenue, which is our proposed 1.09% tax, sales tax, we can alleviate some of the burden on property owners by decreasing property taxes. This will be done by initially using nearly half of the 1.09% sales tax revenue to pay off the general obligation bond debt, which decreases property taxes by 6.725 mils. In this, we can address business property owners and residential property owners' need to lower property taxes. The remainder of that revenue stream, or the 1.09% sales tax, will be used to address the schools' needs in education, operations, and facilities. One of the additional benefits to this proposal is that we do see sales revenues coming from tourists and passer-throughs, those people who do not reside in the school district boundaries, but who purchase items in the city of Woodland Park. This means they too will help to support our children, our community, and our schools. So we are asking that you support placing this tax initiative question on the ballot in April, so that those voters can learn more about this and come to an informed decision when they place their vote on the April ballot. Thank you.
I have some questions for the speaker.
Yes.
The first one is, this is a, proposed as eliminating the 6.72 mil levy, what is the other mil levy?
We have a 4-point-something, Brian might have to help me on this, mil levy, that is the, mil levy override, and then there is a 22.5, I believe, mil levy that is required by the state for every property owner to submit to the, you know, to help support--
Do you recall when the 4.2 override was approved?
2003.
2003?
Yep.
Where did the 1.09 tax increase come from? What predicated that number?
We looked at what we need, and it will not cover what we need, but we also looked at surrounding sales tax, and we thought we need to keep it under 8%. That takes us to 7.99. And then we also looked at how much it would cost to pay off that general obligations bond, and if we went any less, then all that money would basically be going to that, and we still wouldn't be satisfying any of the needs we have.
And this may be a question for the attorney or for Ms. Greenstreet, but why, aside from paying off the debt service, why is there no specification on any other part of that tax revenue in perpetuity?
Well, we actually have in our frequently asked questions where it will go, it's going to go to technology, it's going to go to teacher salary, it will go to the roof leaks that we have all over, we have boilers that have holes in them. We are still at that process, still trying to refine it, and what we were told was, in these legal questions, you really don't pinpoint every little place where it's going to go.
And why is there no sunset on the tax revenue increase?
Well, because it will take, it will take 20 years to pay off this, and when we considered a sunset, we said no, because we're actually returning property. If it were a flat tax and there's no property taxes returned, we might have considered a sunset, but we thought it probably best to take this unique route and return the property tax to the taxpayers.
So simply put, the 1.09 was just to keep us under 8%?
Initially, yes. If we went as to what we needed, it would be, it would be a higher percentage, but we decided that we needed to stay under 8% as a community, and that essentially, as, you know, as tax revenues continue to grow, as Woodland Park continues to grow, maybe in 10 or 15 years, we'll be able to start hitting a threshold where we're not just, not just catching up, but we're actually ahead.
Thank you. And this is a question then for the city attorney, and possibly the board's attorney. At some point in time, once that debt service is satisfied, would we ever be required to return any part of that to the taxpayers because of taper limitations?
There's an expert in our audience on this question and on taper issues, and her name is Kim Crawford. She is the bond attorney for the school district, and she works for the law firm at Butler &amp; Snow, and I would ask that Kim address that question. Thank you, counsel.
Can you repeat, Kim Crawford from Butler &amp; Snow? Okay, Kim, the question was, once the debt service is satisfied with this tax increase, if it were to pass, at some point in time, would there be a-- increase, if it were to pass, at some point in time, would there be a scenario where taxes might be returned to taxpayers? And how do you do that with sales tax? And this is based on taper limitations.
Under taper, the only time you would have to return the sales tax, this ballot question is actually debroused.
Okay.
So for the first.
And explain that to everyone, please.
So for the first full, under taper, you have to provide for the first full fiscal year of your tax increase, so that will be for 2017. So we've worked with Wally to get a number for the ballot question that we think is high enough to where the city won't have to return sales tax for that first full fiscal year. After the first full fiscal year, this ballot question, at the bottom, the very bottom of the ballot question says that you can keep and retain any taxes, any revenues produced by that tax thereafter. So it would just be that one year that you, that there's a possibility that it would need to be returned. But what we typically recommend again is that you try to get that high enough that it's not, that you're not going to have to be refunding any sales tax money, but be realistic enough to where the school district knows that they're going to get a certain dollar amount.
Okay. Well, the debrousing explanation satisfies the question.
But after 20 years, you've paid off the CLP. After that, then you would continue to get sales taxes.
Correct.
Is it, have you explored the opportunity, or possibility, at the end of 20 years when you paid that, that that would lead to another reduction in an equivalent amount in property taxes?
I don't think they have explored that because really, they're trying to increase their revenues, and maybe Carol would want to talk to that a little bit more as to what their, the intent is. There's different kinds of mill levies, as you know, debt service mill levy, which is what they're planning on eliminating. There's the state, the higher amount is, there's the state share and a local share of property tax revenue. That would not be eliminated. That's state law. And then, as you, as we pointed out, the district does have a small mill levy override.
So essentially, the thing is that you, right now, you're even asking for less than what you need. So after 20 years, which is a long time from now, the intent was then just to keep the money to pay for other improvements, improving teacher salaries, doing maintenance, because after 20 years, you're going to still need to replace roofs and things like that.
Correct.
So you would be retaining that, those funds at that time.
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
I've got a question that the previous speaker might be able to answer, but maybe, I don't know if that's probably, no, I'd like to learn more about what's been done in terms of streamlining their management and organization, which you would do before asking for a tax increase. So presumably, you've made serious efforts, especially administratively, since if you look at it nationally, some of the most successful school districts have a lower percentage in administrative costs and a higher percentage in terms of in the classroom. And that also would provide strength for your argument that you need a tax increase if you perform those performance.
Let me follow up with Phil just said. About a dozen years ago, there was a national movement to restraint, restrict, in fact, there were laws, state laws, that school districts could not spend more than 25% of the total budget on administrative. So that was kind of a benchmark that was set some time ago, and it would be interesting to see here where we are on our school district.
I do know that the school board president will be speaking after the comments are made. I know she'll be able to answer those questions.
That's fine.
Okay.
We might wait till the end to allow her to do that.
That's fine. Thank you.
But you can keep track of those questions.
Any more taper related, or?
And we may have more questions for you.
Sure.
So we may call you back, but thanks, Ms. Crawford. Thanks for your explanation. Okay, next, I have Linda Murray.
No. Oh, there it is. Linda Murray, 202 Moes Ranch Road, Woodland Park. And I'm the assistant superintendent for the school district. And you are correct, we've been working for the last several years. The state has, has been cutting significantly for all districts across the state. We've been, again, $15 million is really the amount of money that, since 2008, I think, that we would have had, had the district, had the state continued to fund us at the same level. Our district has gone through task force meetings, we've had, we've made cuts in all kinds of areas. We've added bus fees, we've, we've cut staff, we've cut a lot of staff over the years. Every year, we have budgeting issues, and we budget pretty much down to the penny. So staff leave, staff come in, and we're right there all the time. What we've noticed, of course, is that as the state has reduced their funding, our local districts in the El Paso County area, our competitors, have all helped themselves through local measures. So if you look at Manitou Springs and Academy and the districts in Colorado Springs, they've all passed mill levy increases to help themselves, and that's really what the governor is telling us that we need to do. We cannot just rely on what the state is going to give us. We have to help ourselves in some way. We also know, and this is where I think what Gwen was talking about, we've also studied a lot, you know, well, why can't we just go out for a mill levy override like Manitou and Academy? And we know that our community is unique in that we have other mill levies, and that's, that was our conundrum, so to speak, that we can't just ask for more. We had to find a unique way, and I think that this is a really unique way to be able to help ourselves locally, give us some sustainable funding so that we can at least compete with our neighbors. I do have to say that, I've worked for this district for over 20 years, and it's an amazing district. There are fabulous people up here, some of the best educators, and I'd put them up against anybody. The families, the students, the community, they deserve to be, we deserve to be competitive with the schools in our region. And so I really ask that you approve this and allow us to ask for a sustainable local funding for our school district.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Murray? Thank you very much.
I'm Nancy Leckie, 1005 Skyline Court, Woodland Park. Council members, I ask that you please give the citizens of Woodland Park the opportunity to vote on this important initiative for the children in this community. My husband and I have lived in Woodland Park for over 20 years. We have two children currently in the school district. As citizens, we have seen this great community come together when it was important. For example, many of you may have lived through this, we, the fires, we voted, a majority of us voted to increase funding for the fire department, to keep our homes and our community safe. That was important. As adults and citizens, we are responsible for ensuring that the children in our community have the opportunity for the best education possible. Our kids cannot do this on their own. If you do approve this question tonight, I ask that the citizens become informed before they mail their ballots. Please spend some time learning the facts and the benefits of this important initiative. Please come to one of our information meetings. We're going to be all over town. You'll get tired of seeing us. And also, visit our website. It's citizensupportwpd.com. We spent a lot of time putting together FAQs with questions that we've gotten from people in the community, questions that we answered on our own, and we defined a lot of detail in that document and on that website. We will continue to add information as we move forward and as we hear more questions. This initiative is important to our kids and to our community, because we cannot have a healthy community without a strong school system. So one penny on the dollar for our children, it's worth it, and it's important. So please, vote yes. Thank you.
Say, Nat? Give us a little bit more in depth on how you're going to help educate the community, because it's a, it's a pretty complex question. And I think, and I think a lot of people will agree, once they see sales tax increase, that's going to, that's going to make their mind up already. So help us understand how you're going to help us understand.
Good question, Mr. Mayor. We realize that, and unfortunately, when you look at the ballot question, the very first thing you're going to see is 1.09% sales tax increase. It doesn't, until you get a little bit further down, it talks about the decrease in property taxes. Unfortunately, that's the way we've been told that it has to read. So we understand that that is a challenge, because if you don't pay attention to this initiative before the ballot hits your home, you're going to see it, and the ballots are, I'm sorry, but they're hard to understand as it is, which is another thing we have in our FAQ, is we've outlined the ballot, we put the ballot on there, and we inserted in English what each section actually means to help everybody understand. We are not trying to pull the wool over anyone's eyes. We're trying to be honest. We want everybody to be informed. So some of the things that we're doing, to answer your question, is we are, first of all, we created a website. On that website, we have all the information we can provide, will be there. It's citizens, citizensupportwpd.com. And on that website, again, you'll see the FAQs, there's a contact us, so if you don't see the answer to a question, you can fill out a little form, it will shoot it right to us so that we can answer that. In addition, we're almost finished, hopefully by this weekend. We've created a video, and what that video is, it's a presentation of all the facts so that no matter where you are, you can't come to our meetings, you can get our line, and you can look at that video, and it will walk you through the details of this initiative, what it's going to cost you, what are the benefits to the school, and why we made the decision to go in this direction. So we're hoping that, yes, we're going to meet with as many groups, both the Democratic and Republican parties, we're meeting with them, we're meeting with, we met with the chamber leaders this week already. We're hitting, oh, somebody help me. Well, we, we have like a calendar full of meetings that we're trying to attend in the community, just trying to hit. Some of you, we apologize, because we're probably going to hit you more than once, because a lot of you are multiple committees. So like I said, you're probably going to get tired of hearing from us, but the goal is to be loud and to let people understand what this initiative is about. And we, again, we understand people cannot always get out, especially in snowstorms, so we're going to be providing access electronically to the information through our website. And we're also on Facebook, so you can look for us there, and you're welcome to comment and ask questions on that, and we'll get back to you. So hopefully that helps.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Have you considered using Facebook to advertise? For instance, if it costs $30 to go to every Facebook per member within the zip codes that you would specify, so that would, you know, it's thousands of people.
Right. And actually, there's no cost to Facebook, that I'm aware of. So anybody that's on Facebook, and which is great, is we, there's a community page, and I think Mr. Kelly has already forwarded our information onto that. So the beauty of Facebook is, when you send it out to your group of friends, they send it on, and it does, it hits, it hits a lot of people, so we're hoping to, yeah. We've already have about 200 likes, I think, on our webpage, so at least 200 people we know have seen it and have liked it. So it's encouraging. People are looking, people are curious, so.
And YouTube might be a good place to upload your presentation also.
Right. And I think that's probably the way it's going to be published, and then we'll have that link right on our webpage.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Very informative. Okay, the aforementioned Carol Greenstreet is next. Our school board president.
Carol Greenstreet, 31 Loafers Lane. I feel like I'm becoming a regular. And Mayor, you asked that we be short and sweet. I can be short, but I'm not really very sweet, so. I really appreciate this council and their willingness to let us come to you and ask you to put this question on the ballot, to answer a few of the questions. And if I sent the other school board members up here first and the attorneys, so they would get all the hard questions. So hopefully, hopefully you're done with those. But as far as future plans and why isn't there a sunset? When we looked at the communities around us, and if I, if I had the slide here, it would really probably help you all. When we look at the mills, the property tax mills that go to District 20 schools, it's 60 mils. When we look at ours right now, it's 33.8. When you look at Manitou Springs, it's 52 mils. They just approved another one. Those mills don't sunset. Those mills go to their school from here on out. We don't really have that as an option in our community, just because of the overall mills that we have. We're at 87.21 mils currently in Woodland Park. Manitou Springs is at 76 mils, even with the 52 mils that go directly to the school. And we know that our property owners have a big, our business property owners have a huge burden with all of the mills. And so we don't expect that we are probably ever going to be able to come to this community to try to get more mills for the school. But we desperately need sustainable funding. We are way below the districts in Colorado Springs in terms of teacher salaries, the money that we have for technology. When we, we have another slide that shows the difference between the mills that, the local funding that Manitou Springs has per pupil, and it's 1,400 and some dollars local mills. And in Woodland Park, it's 400, I want to say 480 some dollars per pupil. This sales tax would bring us up to $900 per pupil, still $500 per pupil less than Manitou Springs gets, they locally give for their students for education. So when we look at sustainable funding and the needs of our district, we did not feel like we could put a sunset on this. We feel like this is a win for the community in that this money will always stay local, and this will not affect the state funding. School funding is a very complicated thing that after six years, I kind of understand. But based on some of the mills in the school, there's an equalization fund that comes in. This, this, this sales tax will not be impacted by, by that. And we also did some research and have looked at other, there are three or four other communities in Colorado that currently also have a sales tax.
Five.
Five.
I did my homework.
You did yours. But there have been some that have, that did it in the past for something, and then you also, I've heard about all the marijuana tax and how that's going to go to schools, where it goes to best grants. But to get a best grant, you have to have, they will, they, you have to have matching funds, and the matching funds that you have to have is 69% of whatever it is that you need to have funded. Well, we don't have the ability to have that 69% currently to ask for a best grant to get our roofs replaced in our schools. So we feel like this was a win-win for the businesses, for all of the property owners, and really for the, the community in terms of sustainable funding for our district. And in terms of, Mr. Mayor, you were asking about administration and streamlining administration. Over the six years that I've been on, on the board, we've, every year, have cut and cut and cut from the district funding, and the first cuts were from administration. And right now, I believe, and I don't have the exact figure, but I think, but I believe that about 5% of our budget goes to administration. We are down as far as we can get in central office staff and then in each individual school. We've had salaries frozen for five years. Is that right? There, there would be some. There, there would be some teachers in the room that can tell us exactly how long their salaries have been frozen. At the high school, we went from block scheduling to more traditional scheduling, where they used to have eight class options, now they're down to seven class options in order to save money. We have changed the elementary school times to match the high school times, so that we can run bus routes more efficiently. And we've increased some fees. Those are just a few of the things that I, that we could just right off the top of our head come, come up with, to tell you how we've worked to cut funds for the past several years.
It's very helpful. With respect to the mill change, one of the issues I would have, just the balance between the sales tax and the mill reduction, as I'm sure you've know, you know, and you've probably had discussions, sales tax are inherently regressive. And so, how would you make the case, if you reduce the mill on property owners, there's a lot of renters in town who would not realize any change in their rent, most likely not to be too cynical about it, but they would realize a relative increase with respect to their percent of income going to sales tax, which is the definition of regressivity. So, how would you encourage those people to support this?
Well, and unfortunately, those are the people that are the least likely to, you know, to benefit in a financial matter from that, from, from what we're doing.
Talk about the intangibles.
Right, the intangibles would definitely be, I would, I would venture to say that a large percentage of renters have children within the district, and those people will directly benefit from the, the opportunities that their children will have, that they wouldn't have otherwise. We really, as a district, are at a point that we, we will have to make some drastic cuts somewhere in our district, if we cannot come up with a sustainable funding. We do believe that if we went for a mill levy, their rent would increase. You know, well, if we went for a mill levy, we would fail, let's be serious here. But if we were able to pass a mill levy, theirs would go up. We feel like this actually brings in some people from outside the, the community that passes through, that will help with funding our schools as well.
Thank you, and just to follow up with respect to the use, it's been commented that you don't want too much specificity, which I certainly understand, but what broad assurances can you provide that the increase will go to the dedicated areas? You've talked about maintenance, repair, in particular, teacher salaries, which are abysmally lower than they should be, I think.
Certainly, well, you know, there's nothing in, in terms of the ballot question that's gonna give any percentage or any specificity, and some of that is the fact that, you know, if we have a flood next year, we need to be able to take care of what happened, you know, from the flood. If there's an emergency, we need to have a little bit of fluidity with the funds that go into the general, the general fund. But we have, we have made promises, assurances to the staff, that we've been working to get sustainable funding to help increase their salaries, and I'm pretty sure that they're a loud group, and that if that, if that did not happen, you know, that that would be, that, the board are people of integrity, that care about the district, and they're gonna make sure that we follow through with the things that we're doing. One thing, one other reason that we haven't been real specific with it, is if the sales tax passes, and it allows us to make some changes in technology, the board's plans for next year are to revisit the end statements, which are the broad goals that a district is, is run by, and to determine some major changes that we wanna make in terms of technology, how it's used at our school. There are a lot of new and interesting approaches to education in terms of competency-based teaching children at a pace that works for them, but we, we need to know that we have the money to go work on that before we start there, and so, we wanna be able to use that money to do the things that we think will satisfy our community in terms of what their desire for technology and use within the schools would be.
Thank you, it's very helpful. Bob?
Thank you, I understand you've also briefed the county commissioners. Is there anything positive out of that particular situation?
Bob, I'm not sure what you're asking.
No, one, one aspect is that the vast majority, I think, of people in, in your school district, whether they're in Woodland Park or outside of Woodland Park, probably do their shopping in Woodland Park. So, I'm, I'm not really suggesting that we get the county commissioners to do the same thing that we would be doing here, to increase the sales tax, like at Venture Foods and Divide, that type of thing. But I, but I was wondering if, if that was an idea that had been broached with the county commissioners?
We did not ask that, because as I understand, the county would have to encompass the entire county, and there are two separate school districts within our county, and so, it would not, it would not work well.
Ms. Crawford? Please, if you come to a microphone.
Unlike the city of Woodland Park, counties can't do that. They don't have statutory authority to increase sales taxes for school purposes. Because you're a charter, you have a lot more flexibility, so no county can do that.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
Steve Cavaliere was here. The 6.72 mill levy that we propose to eliminate, how, using that 6.72, how long had you anticipated that it would have taken to pay off the certificate of participation?
I think it's gonna take 20 years.
No, under, under just the mill.
Oh, prior to, well, it wouldn't be a certificate of participation, it'd be a bond, and
It was a bond, okay.
Eight years.
So, it would have taken eight years with the 6.72, but you're saying with the 1.09 sales tax increase, it would take 20 years, and that's because you would not dedicate all of that to paying off the bond?
We would not dedicate all of it to paying off the bond, but also, there will be a different interest rate, and again, I'm looking for the Cavaliere. Can I, can Brian come up and address that, please? Thanks.
Good evening, I'm Brian Gustafson, 981 Paradise Valley Drive, the Director of Business Services for the school district, and here's where it gets complicated, the, the 6.725 mills are bond mills.
Okay.
So, like other governmental entities, we engage in, in fund accounting. So, we have a general fund, that's all of our operations, that's where our salaries, you know, our, the facility repairs, those kinds of things occur. The bond fund is, is where those seven, or 6.725 mills generate revenue to. That's simply to pay off bonds that were issued previously. And so, every year, we have to certify a certain number of mills to generate the dollars to cover that debt service. That only comes to the bond fund, and it simply goes to, to servicing that debt. By going through a sales tax initiative, by issuing COPs, then we're able to get rid of the bond fund essentially, and start to have the revenue come into the general fund. So, that, that's why we can give back bond mills, 'cause basically restructuring had to come into the general fund, then we had that money that would usually come to bonds, now available for operations. It's complex, I don't know if I, I did that any service for you as well.
It, it makes sense, but I, I just wonder about the arrangement, or whoever holds the bond, do they realize that they're losing that dedicated mill levy for debt service, and now we're depending on the sales tax to pay that, or the general fund, which would, would be used?
I, I don't think I'm completely clear on your question.
You're paying off the bonds.
Can we come back up?
There's no bonds left to.
Or Cavaliere. Over 20 years.
I've never been to issue a COP.
So, just, so for the bond purposes, the bondholders would all call in their bonds, they would, the district would send a notice of redemption, and the people who owned the bonds would turn in their bonds. And all of the bonds, those bonds would no longer be outstanding, and so, they would have gotten the benefit of their bargain. And so, what the district would be doing is issuing new, and it's not debt, it's called certificates of participation, which is a manually appropriated current.
Yeah, I understand that part, yeah.
So, so those people would be buying new securities.
Okay.
Which are different, and they'd have a different deal, the interest rate would be higher, because general obligation debt is very secure, it's backed by your full faith and credit, you know, you, you impose whatever property tax you need to pay them back.
And the COPs are backed by equity?
The COPs, they're secured by collateral, so the district would have to put up a building or something in the amount of the COPs, but there's no pledged source of repayment, so the people who would buy those certificates would know that if the district couldn't pay, they could walk away, that's why they're manually appropriated. And the intent, of course, is to not do that, but.
Yeah.
Okay, no, thank you.
No?
Say this, 1.09 sales tax increase passes, how long are we looking before we see the mill levy get reduced? What's the timeframe?
November.
So, it's, so there's about a six-month overlap there, because the sales tax increase is slated for July 1, and then we would have to go through the COP issuance process in the fall, and then not certify the bond mills next December for 2017.
Okay, the reason I ask that, 'cause I kept hearing 20 years, eight years, so I didn't know if it was something that was gonna be, we were gonna pass the sales tax, and then 10 years down the road, then we see a reduction in our property tax.
No, we, we would not certify those bond mills in December of 2016, for 2017 and thereon.
Okay, thank you.
And correct me if I'm wrong, just for the sake of argument, and for those in the room that don't understand the real numbers, we're gonna get about $1.8 million from the 1.09, and about half of that or so will go towards paying off the COPs.
Correct.
And they'll leave you about $900,000 or so extra in your budget.
Correct. Close, yep, yep, depends on, you know, if we can, I'm gonna buy more groceries. That would make a difference.
You already spend a lot on groceries.
I spend, I, I, I spend about $14,000 a year on groceries in Woodland Park.
Those Air Force cadets eat a lot.
They do a lot.
And, and as long as you mention that, give us a sense, and tell me if I'm wrong, if about $50 per $100,000 that you would save on your taxes, is that correct? In other words, if I've got a $400,000 house, I'm gonna save about $200 on the residential side, of course, the commercial side is, is considerably larger than that.
I can address that. I can address that if you like. I've been, I've been doing the real world scenarios here, in fact, I brought my own property tax here.
Nice.
To calculate it.
Nice.
And I calculated reducing the mill levies, so I, I would save $259 a year at the current rate. So, $21 a month, 80 cents a day.
Just, just so everybody understands, about which, what is your house worth? Do you really know that? There you go, so you got about $50, so everyone understands, you got about $50 of savings on every $100,000 that you have in your property, on your residential property, so $200,000 house, you're saving, right, about $100?
Right.
Like, but think about the businesses.
So, I can.
Businesses, the renters, the renters are gonna save money because they don't have to.
I can give you a, a business, if it's a $500,000 property value business, it would be an annual reduction of $975.
Wow, that's a lot. Well, I also did some real world numbers on increasing property tax, or not, I'm sorry, increasing the sales tax, and I, my example was a car, okay, 'cause that's a real big expense, and since if I, we buy a car in the Springs, they charge us the sales tax up here. So, I set a $30,000 car, but currently, I would pay around $2,070 in tax, and with the increase, it would just be $300 more. So, it's not that big of an increase, and, I mean, it really comes down to, like everyone, like Nancy said, was a penny a dollar, which if you really think about that, that's not very much, that's very little for, and, and our teachers, I mean, I, I don't wanna be at the bottom anymore, I wanna move up and be like maybe fifth from the bottom, I wanna see these other schools have to take the brunt of the lowest payments of the, lowest salaries of the teacher. So, I, I'm, when I look at all the real world scenarios, a penny a dollar is nothing. So, I'm hoping most of this money goes to the teachers.
John, did you have something?
Yeah, you did that for the crowd, Noel.
I did my own calculations, it's about $10 a month extra, and for what I spend in Woodland Park, and I spend probably more than Noel, because he buys from Amazon. I always tease you about that.
John?
Well, I did my numbers as well, and it would cost me about $150 a year. I'm sensitive to the challenges the school district faces in recruiting and retaining teachers, and I understand you wanna be specific, and I, yeah, I agree with that, but as Neil was saying, I think, would you anticipate that the teacher salaries would be increased to the point where RE2 would not be at the bottom of the list of the schools that you used to compare?
I, I can't say that it would immediately, it would certainly be our goal, but it would take, I don't know if Brian's got those numbers off the top of his head, to get us off the bottom, it would take a little bit more money than this. I, and I think one of the positives for us about, about a sales tax increase is that if we can help the businesses in Woodland Park grow, we can increase their tax revenues, and there's potential to climb and climb and climb, and I don't know if Carol, when she was doing her research, but there, there is one of the, one of the communities that's approved this, that has been able to come back and even lower mill levies even further, because the sales taxes have gone up enough to meet the needs for the school, that they've been able to do that. Certainly not, not a promise, even a, you know, we're not, we're not even close to there, but it's certainly something that we would be willing if something happened, and we had that ability to do it.
Well, the other number, though, that we're throwing or tossing around is, you know, possibly a million dollars in revenue with this 1.09 sales tax increase, half of that to go to pay the new certificates of participation, and then half of that for whatever.
Yeah.
Why didn't you specify salaries as where the money would be used?
Honestly, because we, we tend to have, and, and people that, that actually do this for a living, that go around and help districts pass mill levy overrides and that sort of thing, have found that the voters are not overall very favorable of that as a reason to increase taxes.
And they would be favorable to fixing the roof, or adding computers, or whatever?
School security, you know, is a big, a big thing for, for voters, you know, and so we could play a game and try to come up with a wording that we thought would be attractive to our voters, and we really just kinda decided not to play the game, but to really do a lot of pounding the pavement and getting out there, and trying our best to educate our community face to face about the needs of our, of our district, and to show them the graph of teacher salaries and that sort of thing, and talk face to face.
Yeah, we, we haven't hit home hard enough, though, that, that of every dollar that we spend in sales tax, if you're a resident of Woodland Park, you pay only half of that. Maybe the folks in Teller County pay for another 40% of that, and then 10% are paid for by the tourists that come through here. So, we're getting the entire benefit of having the reduction in the property taxes.
No, no, and we do clarify that. We are not able to only reduce the tax for a portion, that mill levy is for the entire school district that's taxed that mill levy, it's not just the citizens of Woodland Park, it's the entire district. It's the entire district.
I agree with the approach of making it discretionary with respect to your budgetary authority because things change every year.
They do.
And so I think, you know, to make the case, you just have to have faith in the administration's kind of sound thinking and trust that you'll make appropriate decisions based on current needs.
Right. And like you all, we're elected. And like you all, we generally run unopposed.
Tough job.
Right? And like you all, I think we have the same salary.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. McGeever?
Quite another question.
Yes, sir.
There's language in the ordinance on page two that talks about shall the city of Woodland Park taxes be increased by roughly 2.3 million in the first full fiscal year? What would you expect to see in succeeding years?
Oh, I don't know. That, that-
David?
Well, we typically, with 3% or so, it's about 5.7. So the 1.9 that was spoken of earlier for the 1% is fairly accurate. The 2.3 was what Ms. Crawford referred to as the amount that if that was exceeded, we would have to do a reimbursement to the citizen rate. So the 2.3 is an estimate, an inflated estimate, of what would be necessary just in the first year. That requirement is only in the first year. After that, if, if, and if I'm saying something incorrect, I know you'll, you'll take care of me. You'll be the cavalry. But, so if, that 2.3 is for that first year, that first year only.
That's what's required by Tabor. And, you know, you were talking about the, the hard ballot question. And it's very important that the first, almost paragraph, is really what's verbatim what is required by Tabor. So.
Like it or not.
Like it or not.
And we don't like it, but-
No one likes it, but-
That's quite true. Any other questions?
How, how are you going to address the issue of our, our food is taxed?
Correct.
And my understanding is 80% of the communities in Colorado have food taxed and that's because they don't bring in enough money in property tax to run a city or a municipality. How are you going to address that issue? Because that, to me, that seems to be the biggest concern.
It is a concern and I don't really, I don't have an answer for it. I mean, it's a, it's a decision that our community's made and when you live in a community that's small and doesn't have a lot of retail and restaurants and et cetera, that's, the food is, the food is taxed to help pay for things. I don't, I don't have a good answer for it. Many people say, "Well, I'm going to drive down to Colorado Springs now and buy my food." Then my question is, so if you spend $300 on food, you're going to drive down to Colorado Springs for less than $4?
Wearing a town car, windshield, gas.
Right. I, I won't be doing, I won't be doing that. I don't like, just one stoplight would put me over the edge, so I'll still be buying my food up here.
Oh, I agree. I just want to know how we need, we need to address that because it's, it's going to, it's going to be all over social media, right, Tim? It's already there, see?
Four years ago, when I ran for council, that's, we'll complain to her a lot, that we're taxing groceries and nobody else is. Well, I talked to Kelly Case, who was our finance director at the time, and she did a survey and found out that there were like 189 cities in Colorado that said taxed groceries or food. So, and those numbers, I'm sure, have changed in four years, but it's, it's a big number of cities, especially the ones of our size. If we didn't tax groceries, we'd be dead in the water.
Right. Right. Right.
Let me just do, if I could, just to, on the grocery, since it's been brought up, the, the city didn't decide to impose a sales tax on groceries. Actually, that was a state initiative about 50 years ago. And so it was applied throughout the state of Colorado. In the late 60s, the state legislature decided that municipalities could decide to keep it or to get rid of it. Well, Carol Kenny, many of whom you met at the 125th anniversary, the mayor in the late 60s, and the council at that time, I think had great wisdom and foresight. And when the state offered the opportunity to reduce that, they said, "No. We said, 'We're going to keep it. We're going to keep it.' And it does allow us to provide different levels of service." And I'll speak about those later on this evening. But the city didn't say, "Let's introduce this." The city said, "Let's keep it."
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you all very much, and I really, I really hope that you will approve this for us.
And remember tonight, you're not approving the concept, you're approving putting it on the ballot. That's all you're doing tonight.
Is Carol the last speaker?
I don't know. I'll soon defer to the main.
What?
We'll see you in a minute.
Okay.
And thank you, Mr. Albury.
Okay, that, Council, Councilman Carlson's question. Is there anyone else that hasn't signed up that would like to speak on this issue? Yes, sir. Mr. Pacheco will come forward.
My name is John Pacheco. I live at 1925 Olive Drive. I'm a retired educator. I have no children, no school system, unlike many people that are retired and still pay taxes here. I, I told this to the chamber, and I don't want to, I don't want to belabor this, but I just want to remind people, the last time that a mill levy or bond issue was passed was in 2003. At that time, I had just arrived in the school district. And people like Brian Fleer and other folks were taking me around to show me different things. And the school district also wanted to show me some of their facilities and they really were hesitant to show me the theater. And I finally said, I said, "Why don't you just take me back and let me see that?" And then when I went back there, I understood why they were doing it. It was a black room in the back of the building. Our kids were outstanding in their performances. Our educators at that time and still were, were just terrific. We had a reputation of having one of the finest programs and, and performances in the entire state, and yet they were performing in this place that was incredibly bad. And so at that point, we decided as a group and as a community to kind of go out and try to get funds to help us do something with that. Our teachers were still underpaid, even worse than I think they are now. They hadn't received a raise. And in fact, since that time, that was probably the largest raise we were able to give them, and that was 13 years ago. And what we had done, and what we did then, was to bring the community together and the community responded by allowing us a bond and mill levy override to be able to do that. That was difficult. It was hard on people, but they responded and they said, "We're going to do this because those kids deserve it." And we built that nice auditorium that you have over there now, where the kids have wonderful performances still, and yet they had, they were in a quality place. Teams would not come into Woodland Park to play because we had fields that were full of rocks. And we had fathers that would go along the fields and pick up the rocks and throw them to the side. And we still couldn't get teams to come up. Now there's a wonderful, you know, our weather track, it does need more support with more receipts and things, as the gentleman pointed out. There's also what I think is the best part of that. When I retired, I stayed in this community because I believe this community supported schools, supported children, and supported the community. The partnership between the school district and the city has grown. It was great when I was here and it's even better now. All you have to do is drive by Gateway and watch that field that's there, how beautiful that is, where there once was rocks. You see all those kids out there in the afternoons playing. That was a partnership between the city, the school district, and the state. And there's partnerships at the school district, the city, the police department, fire department, the county, all continue to have. What I talk about is passion for kids. That's what I think this is about, in all honesty. And sure, there's numbers that are important, we're going to get those out. And we are prepared to go out to anybody who'll listen to us to talk about this and explain this. And we've already done some of that as people have asked us about this question, knowing for a while that you hadn't been voted on and given, said, "Sure, we'll go." But I understand the, the city council has to make this decision. And we've taken a lot of questions and we've developed a lot, I think, of work, as Nancy and others have pointed out. And I'm really proud of these school board members. I've always been. I don't know where we get these folks from, honestly. Same place where I get city council folks, that step up and want to do something for many times just headaches with it. But they do it because, like you, they care about the kids, the community. And I want to encourage you to put this on the ballot and let us go to the community and explain what we're trying to do and let them choose what they want to do. I'm confident that when we put this information in front of them and we talk to them, that we will get a sufficient number that will help us to be able to do that. So, I just urge you to let us go out and do that. And thank you for all the things you've done over the years. I know it's a thankless job, but the partnerships and this community and the things we have as a result of that, I think, are tremendous. That's why I still live here. Thank you.
And to Mr. Pacheco's credit, not only was he a former educator, but he led our district as superintendent for a number of years. Your passion is palpable and we, we appreciate you all being here. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, that said, we will move on. Council, questions, comments, before we move forward.
I don't know if I could, it's perfect to make this suggestion before or after we take the vote, but I'll make it now anyway. In a past, when we, when we've had ballot initiatives, for instance, for the fire department, et cetera, we, council have also passed a resolution in favor or not.
That'll be after.
That'll be after. Okay.
Anybody else?
I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Uh, no.
One second.
Make a motion if you want.
Can. Is there any other discussion before?
I have a question along lines of what Councilman Carlson asked. After we make a decision on, on this ballot initiative, on whether or not we will sponsor it, what then are the restrictions on the council?
Ms. Smith?
Yes, then the, tonight, should the council vote to approve this ordinance, then the Fair Campaign Practices Act restrictions do kick in. They are triggered. And council can pass a resolution at the following meeting or at the meeting after that to raise its support for the question. Beyond that, there are restrictions on spending any dollars of city funds. The staff can answer factual questions that are unsolicited and brought to the staff. And beyond that, I will be preparing a memorandum for council that will tell you exactly what the other restrictions are. Generally, there are, there is no money that can be spent to urge support or to urge vote one way or the other. And our election this year is ballot in April?
Nail down.
Nail down.
Does that preclude individuals on council to speak in favor or not?
It does not. Your First Amendment rights, your rights as individuals to speak your position on any ballot question is not restricted by the Fair Campaign Practices Act. What is restricted is the use of city dollars and city funds.
Thank you.
Is discussion permitted before or can it also occur after a motion is made?
We can certainly have discussion after a motion is made.
Okay.
That said, Noel? Motion to approve ordinance 1274 of the City of Woodland Park, Colorado, submitting to electorate of the City of Woodland Park in April 5, 2016 election, a certain question seeking authority to impose an additional 1.90% sales tax for educational purposes. 1.90. What did I say? 9-0.
Well, you'd like that, wouldn't you? We'll take it up a little bit.
I hear a second. Second. Thank you. Any further discussion?
Well, I would like to offer this. As a former educator, I was a special ed teacher before I decided to pursue a career in the Army. Probably the most underpaid county in the state of North Carolina because we were the only Republican county in the state of North Carolina at the time, in a Dixiecrat state. I have a, a true affinity for our teachers here and I do think we have some of the best in the state. My kids are grown. I have six grandkids aged five through 20 and, and they are products of the public school system and it's public schools with a C, not a K. We do have spell check at our house. But I think there might be an uphill battle on this for two reasons. I will support allowing the very smart voters of this, of this city to, to vote on this. It's their prerogative. I'm worried about the 1.09, that, that number was a re-plant because it brought us up to less than 8%. I'm worried about the lack of specificity in the use of the money. I'm worried about taking a bond that would have been paid off in six years and extending that service or that debt service for maybe up to 20 years, maybe more, I don't know. But again, our action tonight is to simply say, "Will this be put on the ballot or will it not?" And I will support that, that, that action, that your education program for this better be good.
Anyone else? Suzanne?
Thank you. Mayor Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, everybody that was here today. I'd just like to take this, take a minute to thank the school board. This initiative started at least a couple of years ago, maybe more than that, with a task force that was comprised of many members of the community, business members, school board members, any number. And they tried to enlist both sides so that they could get the best input that they could possibly receive. So, thank you all. And as Mayor Protam Harvey alluded to, the ball is now in your court. And this is going to be a difficult educational process. I think we have a lot of teachers here today and it's going to be incumbent upon everybody here that's in favor of this to do the best they can, neighborhood campaigns, do whatever that you possibly can because it is a complex issue. It's not as simple as some people think. But best of luck to all of you and thank you all for being here tonight. That said, we will move on to our next public hearing. And that's-
Senator Williams?
Yes, sir.
When can we discuss the possibility of having a resolution?
At the next meeting, I think, is the earliest. Is that correct?
Discuss it.
We can discuss the resolution today.
May I suggest that I can readdress that under my attorney brief court and then get a consensus from council about how to go forward?
That's okay. Great, thank you.
Folks, if you could, if you've got sidebar conversations, if you could go ahead and take them out into the lobby, we still have a council meeting to continue with. Thank you.
Okay, before we go on to 9D, I will read the following announcement. Council members use electronic device, devices, excuse me, to access the materials relevant to the public hearing before us. Be assured that it is the common practice of the city council that these devices are not being used for texting, emailing, or other communications during public hearings. Okay, we now move on to item number 9D and salad.
Thank you, Mayor Levy and council members. This next item is a request from Mr. William L. Page. It is regarding a change in use to the Gold Hill Square South planned unit development. And I would like to begin the presentation with a little bit- And I would like to begin the presentation with a little bit of background about the history of the development of this PUD, this Planned Unit Development, because it started quite a few years ago with the construction of the shopping center in 1978 through 1979. Then there were additions up through 2002, City Market, Gold Hill Lines. And the original development occurred under the traditional C1 zone. And then in 1996, the city overhauled its zoning regulations and a new nomenclature for various types of zones were created at that time, and it was zoned service commercial. The service commercial district requires 50-foot setbacks and some conditions that basically put the existing buildings into non-conformity. So, a year later, in 1997, the City Council passed an ordinance and did a blanket rezone of the shopping center that was for a PUD. Because the shopping center was pretty well built out, that established its heights, its setbacks, and all the other dimensional standards that went along with that shopping center. So, with Mr. Page's new proposal in 2016, he is changing the uses, the character of that PUD, as well as some of the heights and the setbacks. So, it is required in our regulations that a PUD amendment be processed. Go to the next slide. And that PUD amendment is processed through the Planning Commission. They are the ones that decide whether this new use is in harmony and that they have met the criteria of a PUD findings and code. The Planning Commission did do that since last August. They had an initial hearing, and that August meeting, they decided to ask Mr. Page to redesign particularly the height and the exterior of the hotel and come back in October. Mr. Page needed more time, so he did finally bring forward a proposal that the Planning Commission was supportive of. On January 14, the Planning Commission supported the PUD amendment. But in the code for PUDs, it is the council that determines the dimensional standards. And there are five different dimensional standards that we are going to be discussing this evening. And that is your purview tonight, is to determine that these dimensional standards are appropriate for this project. So, with that, I will do an overview of the project, the proposal, and then I will specifically zero in on those five different standards that you will be deciding tonight whether they are appropriate and adequate for this project. So, first of all, I'd like to show you the aerial of the subject property, and the proposed hotel is outlined in yellow. It is part of Building 6 on the Gold Hill Shopping Center. And within Building 6, it sits on two lots, Lot Number 2 and Lot Number 3 of the Page's subdivision. So, you'll see that this lot line goes right through the middle of this building. And that is fine in a PUD because we can set zero setbacks in a PUD. It also shows that there's a portion of Lorraine Avenue, and this is a public right-of-way that does have public utilities underneath the ground. There's water lines and storm sewers through here. And this is a remnant from the 1890s when the Highland Edition was platted over 125 years ago. And there's a little tiny portion of Lot 8 of the Highland Edition that is also part of this overall site that we'll be talking about. And then there is also Gold Hill Place that was platted as part of the Page's subdivision many years ago, and then, of course, Highway 24. And the shopping center is served with three different access points. The Gold Hill Place, Mr. Page also has an easement that is associated with the Lothen Jug property to the north. And then there is also a third easement or another easement up that is to the east of Gold Hill. So, the common area of parking, we will share with you on the site plan and show you that lot of, Building Number 6 is what we're specifically setting the design, the dimensional standards for, the setbacks, the heights, the maximum impervious surface and the like. So, again, here's the site plan. This is what the Planning Commission approved, the final development plan for this PUD that shows the proposed hotel that will take up a good portion. In fact, the overall area of this hotel is about 51,000 square feet. And of that, 51,000 square feet, about 30,000 is new building, and I'll explain that, whereas the existing building is about 21,000 square feet. And that is the portion of the former Woodland Hardware, which is on the lower level. And then it will take up a portion of the Sherwin-Williams building, retail, as well as the Goodwill. The rest of the businesses that exist on the southern half of this building will continue to remain. So, only Goodwill and Sherwin-Williams will be affected by this change in use. Here is an elevation of the building, and I'll orient you, the new entrance to the hotel is approximately where Goodwill is and Sherwin-Williams. That is this main level here. And then you have the picket fence and the taco shop and the other retail areas to the south. What will be added to this level, existing level, will be two stories of hotel rooms. There'll be 15 rooms on the lobby level, and then another 20, about 24 rooms are proposed for the third story and 23 rooms for the top level or fourth story, for a total of about 60 to 62 rooms with this proposal. And then the lower elevation, this is the elevation that will back up toward the Lothen Jug, and you can see the very lowest level. Here is where Woodland Hardware used to be, that is proposed to be changed to a garage, a parking garage, that will hold about 32 vehicles. So, the parking garage, and at this point in time, I can share with you that the mean grade, the height for this building, is proposed to be 46 feet. And that is measured at mean grade, so you take the average from this level and the very bottom level and then measure up from that average. That is the 46 feet. If we were to measure from the very bottom of the foundation, where the garage is going to be, to the top of this parapet, it will be 52 feet. And we'll talk about that a little bit more. So, the perspective, this is looking from the southwest toward the northeast, so it would be, the Catholic Church would be over in this area. And this is the main entrance, this is kind of a bird's-eye view perspective, and you can see the design that Mr. Page has developed in order to try to have this building in harmony with the downtown. There are gables and balconies on the south side. This is actually very prime rooms that will face the peak and have very nice views. He has used a mansored roof parapet on the top so to bring that roof height down as opposed to full roof, and lots of enulations in the surface, the wall surface. This is a perspective looking from the southeast or from Kavanaugh Field toward the back of the building, and you can see that there will be a new footprint extended in, up to a utility easement in the back. And then also, you can see the four levels from this backside. And this perspective is looking from the highway toward the east. This is Highway 24 here, so you can see the size of the building as it relates to the parking lot. I'll show you a few of those floor plans, just to give you that perspective and orientation as well. This is the garage level, and this outlined in red is a new addition, will expand this footprint. This is the area that used to be where the rental equipment was stored, so it works out very nicely to be able to extend the footprint into that area. There is an existing 30-foot easement adjacent to the church property that will always preserve this buffer between the building and the church property. Mr. Page is also proposing to add a little bit of a corner on this side of the building, on the west side, that will help with the stair tower and an additional room. So, the vehicles will be given a pass or a code to be able to enter this parking garage right behind the Lothen Jug, and then they are able to park inside here. There'll be an elevator that will service the entire building, and then they can exit out this way. So, that's the lower level and the repurposing of that retail space that has been vacant for a few, couple of years. This is the lobby level and also has 15 rooms. The entrance, again, off this southwest side, and will have the lobby. It will also include a small indoor pool and a breakfast room and support services. Mr. Page can answer other questions about that. This is the third floor with the 24 rooms that will sit above that existing level of the Goodwill and Sherwin-Williams right now. And then the top floor, which is proposed to have 23 rooms. Now, to discuss the five different standards, the dimensional standards that you will be voting on this evening. The first one deals with the maximum percentage of the site coverage. And there is a total of almost 60,000 square feet among these lots. The building footprint itself is a little bit over 18,000 square feet, so the site coverage is 31 percent, and Planning Commission and staff believe that is acceptable for this use at this location within our community. The maximum percentage of impervious surface, practically the majority of this, these lots are impervious now, they will continue to be impervious. Mr. Page is going to add a little bit more landscaping, but there is only 2 percent of this area, this 60,000 square feet, as impervious, or pervious. So, 98 percent is already existing as impervious. And there is no proposal to change the drainage, there is already a sufficient drainage system in place that all drains into the headwaters of Fountain Creek. The maximum height, here you can see, I have shown you the mean grade or average grade that is taken from the lobby level down to the garage level, that measures at 46 feet mean grade. If it were measured from the garage level up to the top of the parapet, then that would be 52 feet. We have excluded from the top of the height, the elevator hoist, but that elevator hoist cannot protrude more than five feet above the parapet. That is a pretty standard construction requirement, is that elevators do have to have a small little building at the top in order to house that hoist system with a flat roof. The second standard is dealing with lot frontage. We are recommending a 50-foot minimum. We exceed that with, the highway frontage is 85 feet, the frontage along Lorraine Avenue is 200 feet, the frontage along Gold Hill Place is 120 feet. We, I chose 50 feet because that is consistent with the minimum standard for service commercial zoning. So, that is met. And lastly, is the maximum building setbacks. In the central business district, you can have a zero-foot setback on the sides and the rear. On the front, which is adjacent to the rights-of-way, it's recommended that there is a 10-foot setback, but projections can be all the way up to two feet. Because of the uniqueness of Building 6 and the way that Lorraine Avenue sits in the middle of this parking lot, we're recommending, and Planning Commission concurred, that a zero front yard setback was appropriate for this building as well. So, the setbacks or yards for side, rear, and front are recommended at zero. I should note that if there was a change in the footprint of Building 6 by more than 10 feet, then it is required to come back through a public hearing process for the Planning Commission to review that amendment. So, this pretty much locks in the building footprint. It also is locked in because of the existing easements adjacent to the church property, the Lorraine Avenue rights-of-way, and our code says that if there are any proposed changes more than 10 feet, then it is reviewed as an amendment. So, with that, the Planning Commission and the staff recommend that you adopt these five dimensional standards as presented to you this evening. Mr. Page is here to present his project to you, and we would be happy to answer questions.
Bobby, a question now?
Yeah, I noticed we have a lot of little lots in there. Wouldn't it have been simpler just to erase the lot lines and replat it into one large lot?
There are really just two large lots and this one small lot. Mr. Page would rather not combine those lots at this time, and he can talk to why he'd like to keep them. He was required to create these lots back in the 70s. It does seem like the whole shopping center should be one large lot, but that was not the case through the history of subdividing this property.
Carol?
I'm confused.
Carol?
I'm confused. You're saying that we're setting standards or are we doing an exception to an established standard? There are no standards? Well, let me back up. Two different answers here. First of all, in a PUD, there are no standards. A developer proposes their standards. Because of the uniqueness of this shopping center being sort of an as-built PUD when the PUD was placed over it, it had standards based on its existing development. These are standards that exceed those existing that the as-built established. So you are setting new standards for Building 6.
And this property is not under the DDA's building standards or signage standards? This is not part of DDA or Woodland Station?
It's not part of Woodland Station. Overlay.
Overlay, yeah.
Thanks.
Well, I think we're familiar with maximum height of 30 or 35 feet in various parts of the city. How does that relate to this?
All of our zoning for commercial has a maximum height of 35 feet, measured at mean grade. So this is subtract 12 feet higher than the standard. However, in other PUDs, we have approved taller buildings. 54 feet was approved for the Caris Bible College. The church received a variance and it's over 35 feet. I didn't look it up. I think it's closer to 40. The Woodland Professional Building also has a taller building than 35 feet. In this particular site, the staff was comfortable with this height primarily because of the topography, because it sits about 15 feet below the highway and it doesn't look quite as tall in the perspectives.
Sally, how high is Tweeds? And we do have a Tweeds expert in the audience who can probably answer that.
That did not receive a variance, so it probably is a 35-foot tall.
Is it? Okay.
The other major PUD was Walmart.
Yes.
And that had a lot of unusual, which drew a lot of criticism, but we worked through it, but that's a classic example of something that didn't, there's a lot of precedent-setting things there.
And there's no requirement though to go to the Board of Adjustments, this can be decided in our decision tonight?
You have the purview to set the heights for a PUD.
Well, I think one of the reasons we set elevation standards was we appreciated the views in this town and we wanted to make sure that we preserved a lot of these views. Now, right across from this hotel is Gold Hill North, more businesses who really aren't like looking out at mountains. But have you done anything that, like a 3D Google Maps type of thing that would show what the view would look at, like from, you know, for instance, the Gold Hill North looking towards Pike's Peak?
We looked very carefully at that and the reason that the Planning Commission was not comfortable with the October or the August proposal is because it had an additional story on top of it and we asked that Mr. Page look at revising that height and he came back with an acceptable height. So yes, we did look at that very carefully.
But you don't have anything that show us what it would look like?
I guess what he's getting at Sally?
I do not.
Do you have something like you're standing on the road, looking that way and it's just a drawing of what it would look like?
You know, I don't.
Sight lines?
Like a sight line.
Yes, you were sitting in Carmen's Restaurant, looking out, one of the windows facing that direction.
Sally, go back to the previous picture because the orientation of Gold Hill South and North is not on a true north-south axis.
Right.
And so if you look, no, the next one, there. You see in the upper left-hand corner of this picture is the Lyons Memorial Park Avenue flag. Carmen is just above where Sally has the cursor there. And so the view of the peak isn't across the hotel, it's actually across Wendy's. It's a little further to the left of that. Is that correct?
Yes.
So it's the really the diamond shamrock and it's those folks, if there was an issue, would be, that's the orientation. And we stood on the roofs and we walked to different areas. I don't recall with this elevation there being blocks or views of Pike's Peak block, unless you were on Highway 24. That might make a difference, but a little further to the north, it didn't seem to make that much of a difference. Is that your recollection?
Right. It really, the width of this building is going to fit down into that site so that it will not impede the views of the surrounding areas because of its setback from the highway and the other properties.
Sally, how high is the steeple and maybe Mr. Page can answer that for City Market? When you walk in the entrance?
I think that's probably more than 35 feet.
30.
In the public hearing process for the Planning Commission, were local property owners contacted and asked about their feelings about having a building of this height and what were the responses, if any?
This project has been advertised through the courier. It's been posted on site with three signs continuously through this process. We have mailed letters to the surrounding property owners within 150 feet. At first, with the initial recommend, or the initial proposal for the five stories, there was quite a bit of concern. In the last hearing with the Planning Commission, there was very little concern with this proposal.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead, Bill.
I'm a little confused by your comments about a 10-foot difference that could occur, which would require that Mr. Page come back to Planning Commission. Will you explain that for me again?
In our language, our zoning code for a PUD, a planned change or an amendment to an existing PUD is triggered when that building footprint is modified more than 10 feet.
So if he stays within that footprint or less than 10 feet change, then he can do that without coming back and asking for approval?
He can do that without having a public hearing.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else before we bring up Mr. Page? Okay, Sally, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Page? The senior Mr. Page, welcome.
Yes.
Come on up.
Mr. Page has evolved to doing a PowerPoint, so I'm going down.
Sally's pretty adept at teaching an old dog new tricks. She introduced me to PowerPoint during the Planning Commission hearing and it went pretty well. I was a little skeptical. I'm usually waving my hands and pointing at drawings and stuff like that. But my name is Waymore Page and we've owned this property since the early 70s and I'd like to, can you hear me?
That's better, thank you. Just give us your address too, would you please, Bill?
Give what?
Your address.
My office address is 627 West Midland, Suite 207, and it's two floors above the movie theater. Thank you.
Home address.
How about your home address? My home address is 100 Cloverdale Grove, Divide, Colorado. Great, thank you. Okay. I'd like to introduce two other owners in the Gold Hill Square South project and that's Lisa Harrison, my daughter, and Doug Page. And they've been with me through this whole process the last 50 years, so anyhow, I think when I do my presentation here and with some of the questions that council members may have, I may have to draw on some other resources that aren't on PowerPoint and I'd like to get set up where I could draw on those resources to answer your questions and further explain the project.
Good old-fashioned easel.
There you go.
I'm wondering if the audience is going to be informed.
That was just a tease, Carol.
I like the easel better, but.
So the first thing I'd like to address, and this relates to some of the questions that came from council to Sally, is the height. And after the August 28th hearing, there was a lot of concern about height. And then the recommendation came back from Planning Commission that I redesigned the I did a lot of thinking about heights in existing buildings in town and rode around and looked at different buildings and I analyzed the intersection of Highway 24 and 67. And CDOC went through town and widened the highway 10, 15 years ago. They gave me drawings on all of the highway right of way that showed the center line, it showed the grades of all the streets. And so I had all that information in my office files. And so the first thing I came to the conclusion that you take Gold Hill Square North, Gold Hill Square South, Park State Bank, Colorado Springs Health Partners, and the other medical facility across the street, and they all center and focus around that traffic signal at 24 and 67. So I said that is ground zero for heights. And so I did some, first thing I did, I looked at Park State Bank and I sped over at the intersection of Highway 24 and 67 and looked off to the southwest. And so what I saw was the north side of Park State Bank really sticks up way above the street here. And so we, yeah, let's go to the next, that's the one I'm looking for. Okay, this is ground zero and this is the traffic signal at Highway 24 and 67. And the top ridge of Park State Bank is 68 feet above the pavement right here at ground zero. And the way I established the height of Park State Bank, I called up my banker, Tony Perry, and asked him if I could come look at his building drawings and see how far they were above the parking lot and the street, street on the north side and the south side. So I had accurate information. So now let me go back to another one here. I went on the north side of Park State Bank and this is Hank Browning Avenue. And from Browning Avenue up to the ridge of Park State Bank, there's 59 feet and six inches. And so the other, let's go to, coming in on 67, Sally. There you go. So here's ground zero again, right here at the intersection and the, the top of the roof of the hotel is 37 feet above ground zero. Now that's like 22 feet less than they think Park State Bank. So the other building I looked at in town was the library. And it is 69 feet above the extension of Midland Avenue to the ridge of the library. And when you're coming in town on Highway 24, this is, the library sticks way up and well, it's a nice looking building and should stick up there, in my opinion. And so I just, that was the first thing I looked at. And then I had a meeting with David Butterby and Sally Rowley and to just show them what I had discovered about other building heights in Midland Park. And then there was a question about surrounding properties from all the council members. I have a letter that was addressed to Sally from Sandpiper Properties, who are the owner of the Loaf and Joke Store. And I originally built and developed that store and I sold it about 24 years ago or so. And Scott Smith is the principal in that ownership and they're a gasoline marketing company in Evergreen, Colorado. And we've done business with his family for 25 years and we did a design build for a convenience store in Divide, Colorado for him. And so I showed him our drawings, that we had planned for the hotel and so on. And basically, his building sits right here. This is the hometown garage office right here and then the hometown garage is down below and then Loaf and Joke is up on the floor above. There's a retaining wall along here. And he wrote a letter of support and encouragement to Sally Rowley. He had no objections. Thank you. And so I don't think there was any other surrounding property owners that, although there was a Catholic church on one side. there was a Catholic church on one side, nobody said anything from there.
Those letters are normally sent out to those within a hundred and fifty feet or yards. Yeah. So, I don't think that the Catholic Church would have qualified, but I'm sure they would have let you know. You're going to have killer views from the top floor, there's no doubt about it.
There's a, on the PowerPoint, that last photograph I had that was the view from the upper rooms. Oh, right there, that's the, that's my point I was looking, I want to talk about this one. But this is, this view right here is from my office floor deck, and it would be about the same floor level of the top floor on the hotel, and you can see that the view is above all the rooftops and everything to the south and the east and to the west. So, the franchise site approval guy for Best Western came to Midland Park in June. I showed him that view when I was showing him our preliminary drawings, and he got really excited about the view and thought that I should consider doing some special rooms on the top floor about that view. And the, so let's go back to the other PowerPoint, Sally. This is a view from the parking lot, looking over the parking lot of Taco Bell. Here's the Taco Bell sign where you drive through, and this is Midland Avenue right below. But our top floor of our hotel would be sticking up kind of in this area right here, and you can see, you know, this is the building across from Wendy's, I call it the bank building. Here's the country lodge back there, and City Market here. And so, so, that's my first response to heights and views and surrounding properties. If you've got other questions about those topics, could we do those now, or?
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you. Bob?
Thank you. You call this the Best Western. Is that a formal relationship you have with them? I noticed you had somebody from that corporation come visit you.
Yeah, we sent an application to become a member of Best Western. I think it was back on July sixth last year. In the process, you had to send money with it, and then they sent back stacked information about four inches high. There was design guidelines, and there was all kinds of regulations you had to abide by. If you've come a part of the Best Western system, you got to abide by their rules because it's a branded hotel, and they got advanced reservations, and it's like buying a Wendy's hamburger. It's the same in a store, in a city.
So, you're still pursuing that?
We're in the process. Now, in that process, Best Western has architects. Their headquarters is in Phoenix, and we have to submit our floor plans and our building extruders to them for approval. And I talked with Sally about this back in July last year, and it's like a chicken and egg situation. Do I get them to approve it first, and then see if the city will approve what they want, or do I get the city to approve the building mass and heights and architectural character, and then see if the Best Western criteria fits into it? I can show you the example that they gave me in their information they sent back in August. This was the example they gave in their architectural guidelines, and then they sent us a set of drawings from a hotel on floor, with six floors. And the hotel branding, their marketing people got back with us, and they said that we should pursue an upper mid-scale branded hotel in Midland Park, because that market was not being taken care of. And so, with that, and then we had a hotel marketing study done back in March, April of last year, and then they, that determined the feasibility. It was feasible to consider doing a hotel. And I had always, for thirty-five years, had been planning to have the flexibility of doing a hotel on our property. So, when I designed this building six back about thirty-one years ago, I laid it out where the lower floor worked for a parking garage, and the upper floor structural system, it's got a steel framing structural system in it. All the columns are laid out where it's convenient for parking, and that same column spacing works for two rooms up above. The grid's twenty-four feet, seven and a half inches each way, and most hotel rooms are around twelve feet, plus or minus a little bit. So, it fits, and it works, and I designed the foundations thirty years ago to support the upper floors. And so, we've got a lot of existing capabilities in the building. We've got a two-inch water meter in the building already. You know, it was bought a two-inch meter thirty years ago, because it was a good price, and it also touches our future expansion. And Kip?
If Best Western is not the franchise that you go with, what would be your plans after that?
What would be my plans?
If Best Western pulls out, or Best Western doesn't choose the Scissor Site, would you still pursue a hotel there?
Well, after it became public, in the newspaper and on TV and so on, that we're planning a hotel, we did have contacts from other hotel chains. And the, one of the Comfort Inn hotel chains, they've sent us some information that it'd be interesting if we didn't complete our contract with Best Western. And then Holiday Inn Express paid some overtures to us back in September. So, the, it's a very desirable site for a hotel, because of the intersection of Highway twenty-four, the visibility off the highway. And the other thing is that hotel guests that would stay there, they could have their suit dry cleaned if they've gone to someplace by the direct doors about four doors down. They got a number of places that, if you want to send the kids over to Wendy's, why, they can do that, and then Mom and Dad can go with She's in Japan later on or something. And we got A.J.'s Pizzeria, and we got a taco shop next door, and we've got a gift store right next to it that's already there. And so, if someone needed to get a tire fixed before they could stay in a hotel room and have a hometown garage do it, or if they need a fuel filter changed on their automobile or something, there are a lot of conveniences. If they got to fill up fully for the fuel before they take off early the next morning, they don't have to drive down the road to do that, they can do that right there. Or if they want to pick up something to take with them to have lunch or something, apples and oranges, they can go to City Market and get something to take with them. So, there's a lot of advantages to the walkability of the hotel guests being there.
I would agree with that. It has absolutely no bearing on the decision we have to make for you tonight, but I was curious. And then I have a question for Kip. How would this type of hotel impact our water tap, commercial water tap supply?
We don't track commercial taps. We just track residential.
Okay. So, we have an infinite amount of water for commercial taps?
No, we base our water planning off of total water used, based off population, and that population supports commercial growth, or commercial uses.
Again, that has no bearing on our decision tonight, but I thought I'd ask that question.
Good question.
Bob?
Again, no bearing. If the rest of the building sits where you have those remaining stores, are you going to upgrade the exterior to make it look like the hotel? Are you going to make it all look nice?
While Bill looks for that, council, we should probably keep the questions subject to the five, the five dimensions that we have to consider today. It's not whether we want to see that building there or not.
Did I already ask the question?
So, we'll answer this one, and then we'll try to keep to what we're trying to do tonight. It's QJ, so we have to try to keep to the subject, I think.
You know, we would, I think the answer to that question would be this roof fascia going around here. We'd be tying that back in with colors and textures on the hotel building, and so, you know, it'll be an architectural tie-in of colors and materials and textures. It'd be like a refacing, or not necessarily a refacing materials, but refreshing, in the rooms, they call it, refreshing hotel rooms, they go in and refresh them there for seven years or so, but it'd be like an extruder, refreshing and so on.
Okay, if you're done with your presentation, we'll ask for a public comment, and then we'll come back to council, if that's okay with you.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. Anyone here like to comment? I don't have anybody that's signed up. Anyone have any questions of Mr. Page or his family at this point, relative to the items that Sally presented to us? I'm sorry, yes, sir. If you'll come back and, I'm sorry, you already spoke once, if you'll just restate your name and address, we'd appreciate it.
Ralph Taylor, 460 Black Bear Trail. I'm an Aids, Colorado. With a flat roof, if you get a massive storm like we did back in ninety-eight or ninety-seven, that hotel could collapse all the way to snow. The pitch of a roof is what helps get the snow off of that. That would be my fear of not having a pitched roof, is just having a flat with just tremendous amounts of snow on it, that's all.
Thank you. Was anyone else that would like to speak? Now, we'll close the public hearing, and council, do you have any other questions of Ms. Rowley or Mr. Page? If not, then call for a motion.
I move to approve the recommendation of the Planning Commission. This is a PUD that we're approving with the five conditions as cited by staff in the staff report.
Just a point of order, just to be clear, it would be on page seven of the staff report, a motion, the recommended motion is set out there, so it would be a motion to approve the following dimensional standards.
Would you like to read those into the record?
I think you could just refer to five of them that are billowed, although there are a couple of recommendations, so it's four bullets.
So, the motion is to approve the Planning Commission's staff recommendation for the dimensional standards for Building Six located on lots two and three, pages subdivision and a portion of Lot Eight, Lot Twenty-seven Highland Edition, and those are then specified on page seven of the staff report as four, excuse me, as four bullets. Thank you.
You have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, council? Any other questions? Thank you, Suzanne.
Matthews.
Yes.
Mella.
Yes.
Sawyer.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Levy.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks very much. Mr. Page, thank you very much.
Thank you, my lady and council members.
I do have a question or two I'd like to ask, now that we've gotten rid of the vote. Let's do that. When would you expect to start work on this hotel?
Well, we just jumped through the first hoop, and we haven't really designed the building yet. I need to know how many floors I could do, and how the layout is, so I've got to complete the design development on the building now, and figure out, we've got to get preliminary mechanical, electrical, architectural, structural, we've got to get that all put together. And then I've got to have some meetings with Best Western to evaluate their expertise in the lodging industry, and their knowledge, their architects, and their marketing people, and want to make sure we build the right product. And so, it's a, that's all going to take some time, and then we have to, as we're doing that, start working on our financing. We've had some preliminary conversations last summer with the Expec Regional Development Corporation down in Colorado Springs, who are a body that provides assistance to business in Teller County and Colorado Springs, and they've been existence down there for thirty-five or forty years, and they were favorably impressed with the project, but we have to meet their criteria, follow his economic performance and so on. So, that's going to take some time, and the other thing is the, we've got to get final construction bids phoned up with final drawings, so I would say that it's going to be maybe late 2016 or early 2017 before we get under construction. The other thing we have to do is work out a relocation of the Sherman Williams business, and as you probably know, Good Will's off and going to build their own building down by Walgreens, so we have to work that out. And so, in answer to your question, Mr. Schaefer, is it Mr. Schaefer or no?
No, it's John. It's my question, another one.
Okay.
Good. Okay, we move on. We have no new business tonight. No public comment on items not on the agenda. We'll move right on to number twelve in the reports. And I'll start tonight with student arts. And thank you, Bill. This is done by a sixth grader at the middle school, Maya Hoffman. And it's beautiful. Sixth grader did that. It's amazing. And once again, for those in the audience and those listening, we have a number of these that are available to be viewed in your businesses. If you're interested, contact the school district. Thanks to Maya Hoffman. Couple of announcements tonight, Saturday, this Saturday, February sixth. Beer Works sponsors the two thousand sixteen Winter Beer Fest. Great event. The Upeast Cultural Center from two to six p.m. You can buy tickets at the door. Saturday also, February sixth, the Help the Needy Sweetheart Ball. Call six eight seven seven two seven three. That event is at Shining Mountain Golf Course. Saturday, February thirteenth, next Saturday, the Winners Farmer's Market at the Upeast Cultural Center from nine to one. And next Sunday, a week, Sunday, February fourteenth, Valentine's Day, Harry's Romers Motorcycle Club, fiftieth annual ice races at Rainbow Falls Mountain Child Park, north on Highway sixty-seven. Races begin at nine a.m. This is the last race of the season. And then Tuesday, February sixteenth, the Chamber Business After Hours, this month hosted by Park State Bank at Shining Mountain Golf Course from five thirty to seven. The last thing is a reminder for all those interested in public service, tomorrow's the first day, I believe, that you can pull a petition. And next Friday is the last day for that petition to be turned in at City Hall. If you're interested, there is a mayor's seat and three council seats that are up for grabs. And we've mentioned this on more than one occasion, everybody on this dais has run unopposed. And there's a number of you in the community that have a lot, a lot to say and a lot of care for our community. We encourage all of you to consider running for office. It's sometimes difficult, but it's a great thing to do for your community. So we encourage everybody to run. That said, council reports. And Mayor Proton, Marby?
Go Broncos.
There you go.
Go Broncos.
Bob?
Yeah, we've gotten a little feedback from the community, or at least I have, and working with the Main Street boards, too. They're kind of a source of feedback. One of the suggestions, if we really desire public input on things, is to move public comment items not on the agenda, number eleven, up closer to the beginning of the agenda so that people don't have to wait till ten thirty at night to make their comments. I'm just suggesting that as something we might look into. And if you could think about it and come back in a future meeting.
Let me, I'll just comment on that very quickly. And it's certainly the council's discretion to arrange the agenda as you choose. That's one of the things that being a home and a city allows you to do. Years ago, comments on written correspondence were earlier in the meeting. And the council at that time said, you know what? We've got people who have business to conduct. They, Mr. Page, for example, he has been through a process. He's invested lots of time and lots of money. And so the deference was given to folks who had items on the agenda. And if folks had items that they wanted to comment on that were on the agenda, then they were the ones who were expected to wait their turn since they didn't have an item on the agenda. Again, council, it's your discretion, but there's a little history associated with this. It has bounced around, and we can change it any way you desire.
Thank you.
Yeah, my thought was that if they have brief comments to make...
We should never know.
Okay.
We went through this ten years ago. This is the best, we all agreed it's the best route, for that reason.
Excuse me. Unfortunately, the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee was canceled Monday night due to the, well, we have a snowstorm we had, and that'll be rescheduled. Glad to see we have a new member joining us, and look forward to some great new things this spring. Keep this community beautiful.
Thank you.
That said, our town couldn't have looked any more beautiful after the snow.
That's very true.
Phil?
Nothing is fair.
Mr. Sawyer?
Nothing.
Schaefer?
Nothing at all.
Okay.
Just to follow up, Mayor and council, on the comments made by Councilman Carlson and the request for a head nod from council is what I'm asking for, is would council like me to prepare a resolution in favor of the tax question for the school, in support of the school district?
Preparation of this doesn't mean your consent at this time. It just merely means that she could prepare for your review and consideration for the future.
Okay. I think that I see the direction there, and I will prepare that. The same holds for the charter amendment questions. And I would ask council if I can prepare a resolution urging the voters to vote for those.
Yes.
Okay, and I see that as well. And then I will just also mention that an agenda item that would be on an upcoming agenda, I would expect to be the next meeting or perhaps the one following that, would be an intergovernmental agreement with the school district. We've already talked to the school district about that. There are some added costs to this election because we are having a table question on the ballot. It requires some more additional work from your staff. And so we will be working with the school district to prepare a simple intergovernmental agreement in which the school district agrees to cover those costs. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Rattler? I've got a quick report before Brian gives his report, then I've got one after that. Counsel, I mentioned earlier that I want to just speak very quickly about the impact of the tax on groceries. And I think I'm going to couch this in a thank you. A thank you to the council for giving us the resources to take care of the city. And we've got a very specific example. We've talked about the snow on Monday night. The city of Woodland Park has about one hundred and fourteen lane miles of roads. So that's each direction. You know, a two-lane road is two-lane miles, if you will. So we have about one hundred and fourteen lane miles, and we have seven snowplows that take care of that. That's about sixteen-plus miles per plow. A local community very near to us that has five thousand six hundred and eighty lane miles has forty snowplows. That's about one hundred and forty-two lane miles per plow, about nine times what we have the resources for. We have the people, we have the equipment to take care of the city. Peyton Manning's favorite town, Omaha, 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 has one hundred and ten snowplows for forty-seven hundred lane miles, so about forty-three lane miles. So it's important that you understand that we appreciate the resources that you give us so that we can take care of the city in the way the city's become accustomed to.
Brian?
I'll just add on to that. In the Gazette, today, the headline, it says something about the city still getting to the local streets relative to the last snowstorm. And this is Thursday.
And they're going to, they're planning on working through the weekend. And Bill will tell you that his crews, within twelve hours, we had everything done, including alleys and parking lots. And then they continue the next day widening and taking care of the town.
And I can comment that our medical facility, we have two dialysis centers and our office building. And I called the director of streets, requested plowing on an expeditious manner. Still hasn't happened. So it's a lot of plowing they have to do. And five o'clock on Tuesday morning, I can hear the plows going around our streets. So thank you.
Bill's got a great crew that does that. And he gets backfilled by some of Kip's folks, our mechanics. They're all trained. And if we have to go into sustained operations, we have the ability to take care of the community. And you give us that ability through the budget process. So thank you.
And Dave, one thing I'd like to say is that we have the cleanest sidewalks of snow. I was driving, and I was looking over, and I looked at my wife, and I said, I think we have better sidewalk clearing than the roads. So that helps the community get around, too. So thank you.
Brian?
Thank you. Couple of things just on my desktop that are important. So it'll be coming before council. One is the, as you recall, we have the one point eight million dollar note with the city of Woodland Park from the DDA. And that loan note has to be recast. Comes up in June. I hope to bring that before council, before June. We have a thirty-six thousand dollar payment due from the DDA. Probably make that mid-year as well. But just to be expecting that coming forward, and we'll have some conversation about that. Certainly, the city manager and myself will, and the board, DDA board will approve that. But that is something that I'd like to get done sooner than later, so we'll be seeing that. Also, we're working through with the Northeast Telefire Protection District revenue sharing model. We had the mayor and the city manager and myself had the opportunity to meet with the fire district to discuss this issue. And we will be bringing, the DDA will be bringing forth a proposal to the board, and then eventually to city council to go through that. And again, want to get that done here, if not in the first quarter, but the second quarter, so we can move on. There's been a lot of conversation about that in the community, and I'd pretty much like to see that addressed. And I think the DDA board supports some measure based on the conversations we've had with the fire district. So with everything happening, with revenue and so forth, we look forward to bring that to both the board and to the city council. Just anecdotally, I spent quite a bit of time reviewing the SRTI two-school measure regarding the one percent sales tax. I will tell you, there was conversation about the three percent grocery tax. On the other side of that, it is significant when we talk about property tax reduction within the business district. On the street, it's meaningful, particularly for the small mom-and-pop business that happens to own their own shop. Sales tax, the property tax can be higher than their mortgage payment over the course of an annual. So if you have any questions about what that really represents, I'd be glad to give you some data points. We certainly will discuss it at the DDA level. But I will tell you that that six point seven mils on the street is meaningful. And so, again, any other thoughts, questions? We'll have some additional data points that'll come up as this gets discussed more in the community.
Quick question, comment.
Sure.
Can you make sure you feed that into Aaron so that it can be included in the resolution?
I'd be glad to.
The fact it has on the small businesses.
Be glad, too. The, recently, the Main Street Board met, had a work session in prioritized work program elements for two thousand sixteen, which our Main Street Coordinator, Darlene Jensen, forwarded to DOLA. And I'll just mention some of the projects because oftentimes we get asked, what is Main Street up to? What are some of the work programming elements? And one of the things that I'm particularly interested in with Main Street is being able to say, oh, Main Street is doing this. And so you can readily identify what the mission of Main Street is as we move forward. Several items that were noted, respiratory signage at Woodland Station, we've heard, many of us have heard, that we'd like to upscale that or to feature that. Kiosk and pedestrian plaza in Woodland Station. Finalize the five oh one C three designation with the IRS. Develop and conduct ongoing volunteer training. A lot of volunteer effort that's involved with the committees and the various organizational elements of Main Street. Facilitate a vision process for the Main Street, particularly the downtown area. And in concert with that, a downtown improvement plan, which would include DDA Economic Development Group with the city and the Chamber of Commerce. Update the business inventory database and valuation of Main Street properties. Assistant marketing downtown properties. Empty retail and vacant land, that's an ongoing process with not only City Economic Development Office, but Main Street and also DDA. Complete street skate study with the Department of Local Affairs. Produce walking tour brochure that will feature both natural features and historic, Upeast's historic preservation tour. Enhance use of the pedestrian plaza in the top of round thing, if you will, in Berkstrom Park. Main Street's involved with co-hosting and coordinating the Fourth of July celebration. Develop Main Street website listing and linking all business with the Main Street boundary. Cross-promote events, Moose's loose, you saw today, Farmer's Market, October Festival, and now White Side of Christmas Home Tour and Christmas Parade. And then finally, distribute artist benches throughout town. So it's a busy group. Hopefully, there'll be a visual component to that. If you have any questions, you could certainly ask one of the board members, including myself, or Darlene Jensen, our Main Street coordinator. And finally, the DDA Main Street in association with one hundred and twenty-five years celebration, we're going to have a bonfire in Woodland Station on February thirteenth. It's a Saturday from five to seven p.m. I believe the Moose will be in attendance to that as well. If you had the pleasure of joining the community Sunday for the one hundred and twenty-five, that was an exceptional event. Hats off to everybody that put that on. I know Sally was involved, and many others with the city. This is an ongoing effort in concert with the celebration of one hundred and twenty-five years in Berkstrom Park.
Counsel, that's all I have this evening. Anything I can answer this morning?
Will there be food and drink at this February thirteenth bonfire? I believe there will be. I've heard rumors of such. I'll look for you. I'll bring some just for you, Dan.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. And Brian, thank you for the reminder about the bonfire. I appreciate that very much. Counsel, the last thing that we have, I have to report this evening is after nine years of services, our Public Works Director and City Engineer, Bill Alsbach, has announced his retirement for the end of May. He's ready to go to permanent recess. He enjoys recess very much. And we'll spend more time talking about his accomplishments and his contributions to the city. But I felt it important to let the council and the community know because we're going to start advertising for some overlap time so that Bill can transition a new person into this very important position with our city. Bill, did you want to say something?
I promise to keep it extremely quick. But it's been an honor to lead your fine public works staff, to support my peers up here, the city manager and his staff of the city, and most importantly, to serve the citizens of Woodland Park for the last nine years. Thank you.
That's it, Mayor. Thank you. And of course, counsel and Sawyer's going, why am I missed?
I know.
Bill's retiring.
Yeah. Okay. We'll have plenty of time to thank Bill, but I'm going to start today. By, just by two years and getting to hang around a little bit and see everything you and your department does, it's amazing. You will be missed. So thank you very much.
Well, luckily, the people who do all the work will still be here.
I know how that goes, trust me. Thank you. I'm sorry, moving on to comments on written correspondence. And I'm sorry that Catherine just left. We have a couple of letters from people that received money. One from the, from the community investment. One from the community cupboard that just says, thank you so much for everybody at the community cupboard. But I think that this letter should be read. We'll take a couple minutes.
Bill, did you want to say something?
I promise to keep it extremely quick. But it's been an honor to lead your fine Public Works staff, to support my peers up here, the city manager and his staff of the city, and most importantly, to serve the citizens of Woodland Park for the last nine years. Thank you.
That's it, Mayor, thank you. And of course, Councilman Sawyer's going, what'd I miss?
I know, what'd I miss?
Bill's retiring.
What? Yeah.
Okay. We'll have plenty of time to thank Bill, but I'm going to start today. By just by two years and getting to hang around a little bit and see everything you and your department does, it's amazing. You will be missed. So thank you very much.
Well, luckily, the people who do all the work will still be here.
I know how that goes, trust me. Thank you. I'm sorry, moving on to comments, I'm reading correspondence and I'm sorry that Catherine just left. We have a couple of letters from people that received money. One from the, from the community investment. One from the community cupboard that just says, thank you so much for everybody at the community cupboard. But I think that this letter should be read, I'm going to take a couple of minutes of your time. This is from Choices and Catherine Perry, who's the executive director. And it reads, Dear Suzanne, thank you for your gifts to Choices. I'm excited to tell you that gift has already had life-saving impact. A young woman came in last year for STI testing. As part of this process, we automatically do a pregnancy test. So that should medical treatment be necessary, the pregnancy is treated as the priority. She was obviously hoping for a negative STI test, but soon discovered not only a positive result, but a completely shocking positive pregnancy test as well. Both results threw her into a tailspin. What would she do about an unplanned pregnancy? At the complication of sudden questions of fidelity in her relationship? And it was a recipe for emotional turmoil and rash decisions made in panic mode. As the father of the baby sat receiving his STI results, his phone lit up with texts that she was headed for an abortion. One well-trained nurse was able to intervene, calm her, reach out in genuine concern. An empathy for this frightening place where she suddenly found herself without options. With that simple offer of friendship, acceptance and support, her decision was reversed. I'm delighted to say that this baby had the first ultrasound of 2016 in our office and has now passed 18 weeks of gestation, healthy, happy, and kicking his mama to remind her he's ready to change her life for the better. Both parents began parenting classes this week. They may or may not stay in a relationship. But this baby will now have a mother and a father, both prepared to put his needs above their own. Thank you for making this Main Street possible. Signed, Catherine Perry. John?
Thank you.
And that's all I have tonight, this meeting is adjourned.